Let the record show that the Prattville City Council meeting of Tuesday, June the 5th, 2012 officially started at 6:12 PM. If you'll join me and stand, render the pledge of allegiance star flag, followed by our invocation. Salute, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will you bow with me, please? Our dear gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy as a city and as individuals and as families. We ask that you put your hand on us and protect each and every one of us, keep us from harm. We ask especially your blessings on those that are serving us in the armed forces in harm's way today. Bring them safely home to us, in Jesus' name. Amen. Madam Clerk, will you call the row, please?
Counselor Striplin.
Here.
Counselor Wood.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Counselor Miller.
Here.
Counselor Renninger.
Here.
Counselor Bowles.
Here.
Counselor Fink.
Call the meeting officially to order. The character trait of the month is honor, respecting others because of the higher authorities they represent. Fellow councilors, you have received copies of the minutes from the public hearing and city council meetings from May 15th, 2012. If there are no additions, deletions, or amendments, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Some move.
Moved by Counselor Fink. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Miller. Any discussion on the move to approve? All those in favor of approving the minutes signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign, saying none, the minutes are approved. We're going to deviate from our regular agenda and grant a point of personal privilege to our state Senator Brian Taylor, who would like to share some information with us from the legislative session. Welcome, Senator.
Thank you, Mr. President. Appreciate it. It's good to be here with all of you. I know you have a full agenda tonight, and so I've just asked for just a couple of moments to take this opportunity to brief you where we stand after the legislative session, both with the budgets and otherwise. So let me get right into that. If, it's no secret to anybody here that we're in a, we've been in a dire budget situation for several years in this state, as you've been feeling very much on the local level as well. The good news is, if you read the paper earlier last week, it looks like that for this fiscal year, we are not going to see any proration in the Education Trust Fund. That's according to the State Finance Office. That's their prediction, so we will not be facing proration in the ETF this year. It is not expected that we will have any additional proration in the General Fund. As you may remember, we, the Governor has already declared a 10.6% proration for the General Fund, and the good news is that it doesn't look like that will be increased this fiscal year. Of course, we were faced with some incredible challenges in the, in the General Fund in the legislature, and I will be happy to meet with you in person at any time to discuss those things that are particular importance to you, but let me just say that we're facing about a $200 million shortfall in the General Fund for fiscal year 13. That's because all of the stimulus money has run out, all of the growth taxes, as you know, are in the Education Trust Fund, and so we have this constant challenge, how do we fund General Fund services? And one thing I tell constituents when they come to me, and I know you all hear from your constituents as well, my constituents say, hey, it's important to me that we keep convicted felons behind bars, so do everything you can to fund secure facilities and pay, hire and pay good prison guards. Other constituents come and they say things like, well, please make sure we fully fund, just lost my train of thought, excuse me, please, please make sure we fully fund early intervention for children with developmental delays. Please make sure we fully fund roads. We need to improve the roads. So you all know where I'm going with this. It's, it's always a constant battle to decide where does the money go? What are our priorities? The real challenge we have in Alabama, you may not be aware of this, is that 87.5 cents of every dollar is already earmarked to be spent by some agency, department, or group before it ever arrives in Montgomery. And so our challenge as legislators is what, what do we do with those 12 cents that are unaccounted for? That's all we have, the flexibility in the budget, to be able to meet the needs, the kinds of needs that I've just talked about. So, under the Governor's leadership, what the legislature chose to do with the General Fund budget this year was to pass a budget, which is the paramount duty of the legislature, and, and to submit a constitutional amendment to the voters to decide whether to tap into rainy day funds, essentially our state savings account, which is now over a billion dollars. And if the voters decide not to do that, then the legislature will probably be called back in a special session in October to revisit the budget scenario. But I do want to say, when, when I ran for office two years ago, I laid out my priorities. And those priorities, number one, were streamlining government, making it more efficient and more accountable to the taxpayers. And so as we're facing these shortfalls in the General Fund budget, I want to make sure you and the citizens of our city understand some of the steps that we've been taking to cut waste, fraud, and abuse, and to streamline government. We, this year, we passed a bill that would eliminate taxpayer-funded retirement benefits for convicted felons. Believe it or not, that was not the law in Alabama. If somebody was convicted of a felony who worked for the state, they could still collect their full retirement, so we've eliminated that. We've cracked down on unemployment fraud. Under this new law, those caught defrauding the Unemployment Compensation Fund will be guilty of a Class B felony. We're requiring a public database of bids and contract proposals that every citizen can go online and see at open dot Alabama dot gov, that contracts are properly being bid out to ensure we're getting our money's worth and not paying too much. Pension reform, of course, is the big one. Most people are not aware that the taxpayers of Alabama subsidize our state employees and teachers' pension funds by over, well, almost a billion dollars a year. That's a billion dollars that we can't spend in the classroom, a billion dollars we can't spend on textbooks, a billion dollars we can't spend on troopers for safe roads and streets because, because we're subsidizing the pension, the state retirement system. Fortunately, we passed a bill this year that will change the pension system for new employees only, so it will not affect any existing state employees or teachers. But it does raise the retirement age for new employees and will save the state more than $3 billion over 30 years. So that was an important reform to shore up the pension system. Another priority was putting Alabamians back to work. This year, the legislature passed the Heroes for Hire Act, tax credits of $2,000 to any business that is hiring a veteran recently returning from the war. We passed economic development incentives to attract aviation and aerospace manufacturing. One of my priorities was to focus on attracting industry and jobs, high-growth jobs, high-paying jobs, and we hope that, that legislation will do that. We passed a bill called the Alabama Data Processing Center Economic Development Incentive. This new law expands the scope of certain tax incentives and allows us to recruit data processing centers, which could become very important up there at the industrial park near Central Alabama Electric Co-op, as they're, they're trying to recruit data processing centers to that area. We also passed the Alabama Film Incentive Act to, it's a shame whenever we see movies producing films about Alabama in other states, and so hopefully that will attract some more of the film industry to our state, particularly when you're talking about movies about the, the red tails, Tuskegee Airmen, or Sweet Home Alabama. Let me just skip ahead to two things that were very important to me, that I discussed with many of you when I sought this office. One was redistricting, and I fought for a seat on the redistricting committee, and I'm proud to report, as you may have seen, that at least on the Senate side, Altaga County will finally all be in one Senate district again. So that was definitely a victory from my perspective. And then perhaps one of the most important things nearest and dearest to me is how do we deal with the 2007 legislative pay raise? And I want you all to know that the legislature this year passed a constitutional amendment, and I'll tell you why it was a constitutional amendment in just a moment. We passed an amendment that will go to the voters this election, that will allow the voters to decide whether to repeal the pay raise, but not just that. It will allow the voters to decide whether or not this should ever be allowed to happen again, and that's why it has to be a constitutional amendment. The reason the legislative pay raise happened in 2007 is because of a flaw, a loophole in the existing constitution that allows legislators to give themselves a pay increase through the back door by calling in an expense allowance. This constitutional amendment would fix that. It would fix the legislator's salary at no more than the median household income, so that legislator's compensation would go up or down with the incomes of the people we serve. If the people are doing well, legislators will share in that success. If incomes go down, as they have for the past four years, legislative salaries will go down under this amendment. This amendment would also require that legislators, like every other state employee, and probably your employees here at the city, file actual expense reimbursement requests, so that there's some accountability there. We make, make sure that legislators are actually incurring official expenses rather than just having a blanket expense allowance, and those expenses will have to be documented and verified by a voucher. So I've taken up more time than I wanted to, but I wanted to just give you a taste of the reforms that are going on in Montgomery. No bill is perfect. That's the one thing I've learned in the last two years, that when you put 140 people in a room, it's almost impossible to get everything you want. But by and large, I'm pleased with what's going on, and I look forward to working with you for another two years and, and to listening to my constituents here in Prattville, so we can continue this progress. Thank you very much.
Any questions from the council for Senator Taylor?
Senator, Senator Taylor, I'm not going to let you run off that easy. I want to tell you personally, thank you for all the work, because I keep up with how many hours you're working. It's nowhere, you're getting paid minimum wage. I really do appreciate everything you did on this, this, this go-around and the last one, but I want to tell the audience, the most thing, the number one thing I'm absolutely most proud of, Brian, Senator Taylor, sorry, whenever you call him, every time I've called him, I either get a call back that day, or I get an answer when I call him. And that speaks a lot of your public, your, especially when you get into your senators and your, and the higher-ranking officials, that you can actually get them when you need them, and I really appreciate that of you, because your accessibility has been really, really good, and I hope that stays that way for the next four years.
Thank you, Counselor.
But I really do appreciate your, your service.
I appreciate that, and I want everybody to know that you call frequently and often, so you're working hard, too. And, and I will always try to, to stay in contact with you and with, with my constituents. We had a little glitch in my office with messages being received and getting to me, but I think we've taken care of that, so anybody who calls my office ought to know that that message is going to get to me. Let me also, if I can, just give you my personal cellphone number. If you do not have it, my personal cellphone number is 334-221-0072, and I welcome anybody to call me at any time on that number, particularly if you're having trouble getting through the maze of phones over at the State House. Thank you, appreciate it.
Any other questions of Senator Taylor? Counselor Miller?
It's not a question, just a comment. Senator, you don't need 140 people. We, you proved your point when we get seven in a room.
Any other comments from the council?
Thank you, Senator. We appreciate you being here. I invited Representative Beckman to join us tonight as well, but I don't see him in the audience. Senator?
I do. Representative Beckman called me about two hours ago. He's at a doctor's appointment in Birmingham, and said he's going to try to get here before the end of the meeting, but he wanted everybody to know that he's planning to be here.
Well, we will recommend, recognize him when he gets here. Hope all is well. This time, we'll open the floor up to comments from persons present that would like to address the council on any item on the agenda tonight. Anyone here would like to address the council on any agenda item this evening? Please raise your hand. Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name and your address and, and your business.
Name is Richard Minnick. I reside at 105 Asbury Drive out in Burton Manor. I'm also the president of the Homeowners Association out there.
Yes, sir.
There's two points I just wanted to point out, bring up on two resolutions. One is Resolution Six. It scares me anytime I see amend without an explanation of where it's coming from. Suggestion, you know, you could start putting even in these agendas whether it is planned versus unplanned. If it's unplanned, perhaps you could say where that money is coming from. That reduces a lot of this. I've seen a lot of people get up here and say, where's this money coming from? Where's this money coming from? Everyone's kind of watching the pennies right now, so just a suggestion. We do that as well. We had our annual meeting in which they asked for us to have a larger reserve in case we had storms come through. So we said, okay, we can do that, but the only way we can do that is reduce another item. Where do you want us to reduce this? And we took up a vote, and we reduced that item in accordance, so that's just a suggestion. The second item I wanted to bring up goes with that, is I noticed that the budget on the website is not being amended or kept up to date with any changes that you all make as a council. It would be helpful if there is a summary of changes that is being posted as well, that says, at this time, this was changed to add this or reduce this. I think it'd just be helpful, trying to keep up with all these documents, and I know it's hard to do, and it just would be helpful, I would think. The third point, it'd be a little more potentially contentious. Do not have a problem with Resolution Four, which is that you're purchasing new vehicles. I would say, I do not know what the police department does now, whether they actually look at the total cost of ownership of a vehicle, what that price is for the vehicle versus the, with the maintenance, with the gas, to come up with what is the best vehicle to buy as well. They should also be looking at the average age, lifespan of vehicles, and the schedule for replacement. You should never really be surprised that there is vehicles that need to be purchased at any time. It should be a part of their budget. Perhaps it is, and I'm just unaware of that. The other thing I noticed was, I did pull the 2011 Police Department Report, which there isn't a 2012 out there right now, which had, that there were 74 sworn officers. What it had on the website is now that there are 83 sworn officers. With that, there's also 90 vehicles in use. According to the document, maybe a little different, based on that was a 2011 document. So they have total, at that time, 55 marked units, 26 unmarked, and nine motorcycles, for a total of 90 vehicles at that point, and we have 83 sworn officers. I would also offer up that while we do appreciate that the officers are allowed to take their vehicles home, keep their vehicles with them and stuff, we don't necessarily have to do that. In times of budget constraints, we can obviously have a rotation for vehicles as well, a check-in, check-out kind of thing, that we share vehicles. Anybody in the Navy had hot swap bunks, kind of the same thing. Just bringing that up as a suggestion for thought in the future. With that, I'll conclude my discussions. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
Great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I will say this, that our full complement of sworn officers is now 78, and we currently have onboard 73 or 74. I'll have to check the numbers. And as far as rolling units are concerned, we have a number that need to be replaced. That's why you see these three. The Mayor and the Chief of Police are working on a program for rotation, as far as use and replacement.
Great. Appreciate it. Thank you.
But thank you for your comments. Anyone else present like to address the council on any agenda item this evening? Okay, seeing none. Mayor, we'll go into your report. Do you have a report for us tonight?
Believe it or not, it's going to be a very short report tonight. I would like to go ahead and ask, respond to some of the comments recent, about the budget and so forth. Now, the budget was updated, I believe it was 10 days ago, and our Police Department information is always presented at the beginning of the calendar year, so there should be some updates on that a few months down the road. But as far as the, the vehicles that are there with the Police Department and, and the vehicles that are taken home, after I did take over as Mayor, the police cars, the black and white units that are going home, are only going home with officers that stay inside the city limits. At one point in time, I think, all, all black and white units were going home, whether the officers lived inside the city limits or not, but we did do a little bit of a policy change there. With that change, it also included a no idling policy to help cut back on fuel usage, and that was one of the main reasons for cutting back on the black and white units going home outside the city limits. The vehicles in some areas, the black and white units, patrol cars in some areas, are utilized in some cases for multiple shifts, and there's different schools of thoughts on that. In my opinion, if you designate a vehicle, no matter what it might be, a patrol unit, a dump truck, a garbage truck, and you have one person who is the primary driver of that, they generally have a tendency to, to take care of that vehicle a little bit better, to ensure that it, the life of it is extended just a small amount. And, but there's different schools of thought on that, and not only time will tell which, which school of thought is the proper one. I think right now with the, the vehicles that we do have on the agenda tonight, talking about the, the interceptor SUVs, I do encourage you guys to move forward with that. The program that I envision on that is that these are some SUV vehicles, police interceptor SUVs, and if we can get a program going to where we do have these vehicles brought into their shift into the Police Department's rotation, to where they can rotate them back out and allow other departments to utilize them also. The, the main reason for going with the SUV is because you can put a trailer hitch on it and then pass it down along the line to urban management, leisure services, and maybe even have a program with the police and fire department where they are shifting them or rotating them in and out more frequently to get, to get the better usage and the longer life out of those vehicles. But if you can move forward with, with that, that is the first step in the automotive program that, that I see envisioning over the next numerous years, because the, the Police Department, and there's some other departments, too, that need some equipment. Urban management, you know, you guys have heard me sit up, stand up here and talk about the 2014 area, which is mostly District One, but not completely in District One, some in District Three, I believe it is. Don't hold me on that one, but I definitely know it's in District One. But in the very, in 2014, the, the Talga County and the City of Prattville had a, an understanding that in 2014, the city would take over cleaning the ditches and taking care of the streets to where, which the county is doing now. And also, right now, we are under, the Police Department is, is also covering the police jurisdiction, and under that same agreement, the police jurisdiction would disappear, the Police Department would fall back to the corporate limits of Prattville, and where our police numbers are something I'm generally a little bit uncomfortable about talking about in public too much, but they're doing an excellent job, that they're able to cover all the calls that are being, being delivered to them, doing it in a very professional manner. But also in that 2014 plan, if it does come to, to happen the way that it's been laid out, then that police jurisdiction dissipating, that will actually help that Police Department to be able to do their job in a better manner with fewer calls, excuse me, and also less expenditures of, of fuel, because it's, I think they have a little over 3,000 residents in that area, and it does encompass quite a bit of a, of a landmass there. But I did promise that I was going to try to keep this report very short. Okay, I've already talked about the police cars. If you guys can move forward with that, the remount of the ambulance is something that we have talked about here in public before, to where we have had an accident, we have some insurance monies that, that need to, that will help offset the cost of this, and so if you can move forward to that, so that way we can get that fleet completely up to, up to date, and we do have a program for that, so that way we'll be changing those ambulances out in the very near future. And I've been working with our finance director and the department heads, trying to get all of our equipment, no matter whether it's sanitation, wastewater, police, fire, urban management, leisure services, you name it, we're trying to get our fleets to where they are not a burden to our vehicle maintenance department, to where that, that vehicle maintenance department is doing that, just doing basic maintenance and not true repairs on that. It's going to take us several years to get there, because we have, I guess, gotten behind the eight ball, be one good way to say it, and not keeping up as quiet as well with the equipment, whether it's lawnmowers, tractors, you name it, but I do think that we're grasping a handle on that with the help of the enterprise funds, with the help of our finance department being very mindful of all the dollars, and also all the department heads for being very mindful of all the dollars being spent. I've actually, over the year that I've been here, I truly feel that there's been a little bit of a culture change. You know, in the past, it's been throw some money at it and we'll fix it. I think that the department heads have realized there's other ways to fix things than besides just throwing money at it. If you have the money, and that's the way you want to have your school of thought, that might be one thing. The school of thought, I believe, has been slowly changing. We don't have the money just to throw at things. We have to be very frugal with the dollars that we have, and, and I want to commend all the department heads and employees. I think they have shown me a big change in the last year or so. Moving right on along down the agenda, the cable television franchise that was talked about, that, that is where it's an agreement. We're having one company take over another one, pretty much a name change, but there's also a contract, a, um, agreement that there's some, potentially some negotiations in it, and there's a possibility through those negotiations, it might be able to save us quite a bit of money, and then more, and enough to actually pay for Resolution Number Six. But if you can move forward with that, and, and also the surpluses that are on ordinance number seven and eight. Resolution Number Nine, which is a temporary part-time building inspector, that is most critical that we move forward with that, because there's, fortunately, we are seeing some homes being built in this area, and we do need this position filled, and so if you can move forward with that, so that we can get that position re-implemented into our personnel, and that is a, I think, a very good deal for the city. It's an additional $7,000 to the, to the budget, but that department is actually running under budget for their personnel costs, so you're, you're not going to have to see any kind of true adjustments on that line item. But if you can move forward with that, I certainly would appreciate it. We, we've had a very good Memorial Day, had a good, good attendance at the Memorial Day or Memorial Day celebrations, had a great attendance down at the park that day. We, as I stood up here at the last council meeting and talked, it was Retro Day, we charged 25 cents to get in, 25 cents for hot dogs. We sold, well, we cooked, I don't know exactly how many we sold, but we cooked approximately about 700 hot dogs and had about, almost 500 people come through the gates up there. And, and between the swimming pool, the creek activities that we had back there, it was a very, very good day, and I really helped the Fourth of July. We had a, the first time that we've ever had a department head meeting somewhere else besides City Hall, as far as I know. We actually had a department head meeting at the pavilion at Pratt Park, talking about Fourth of July, which is just right around the corner, and we expect it to be one of the biggest and best. Have a couple of new little twists for the upcoming Fourth of July, which is on a Wednesday. You're going to have, well, actually, I'm going to wait and, a little suspense build-up there, and tell you a little bit more at the next council meeting, but get ready for a great Fourth of July. Besides that, I'm not going to ask for you to indulge any more of my conversation, or, and I'm not going to ask that you allow me to bring any guests up here tonight.
So let me understand, you're going to reel out the line with the bait on it and just waggle it and not let us bite on it, right?
I was actually thinking it was a carrot. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions from the fellow council members of the mayor? Counselor Miller?
Did you start off by saying you were going to be brief?
It's been so long ago, I done forgot, so I don't, I don't remember. I'll have to look at the tape.
Good answer.
[laughing].
Any other questions from the council? Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
Move into council reports. Counselor Striplin, do you have a report?
No, sir.
Counselor Wood, do you have a report?
No.
Counselor Miller, do you have a report?
No.
Counselor Bowes, do you have a report?
No, sir.
Counselor Fink, do you have a report?
No, sir.
By golly, I do. The Finance Committee meeting, Finance Committee met last night, and we discussed the Gin Shop Hill rezoning, the ambulance remounting, the purchase of the 2013 Explorer and Interceptors, three of them, the cable franchise, the part-time hire of the inspector, and some other things of general interest, and the Finance Committee recommends that we move forward with those items on our resolution, our agenda, excuse me, those items on our agenda. We're going to move into our agenda at this time. First item is a resolution to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title XI, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Counselor Fink, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. To declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title XI, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville declares that the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds on the properties continue to be a public nuisance. 214 Alice Lane, 641 Allenville Road, 338 Bedford Terrace, 1268 Bridge Creek Road, 1304 Carson Drive, 1306 Carson Drive, 1308 Carson Drive, 1311 Carson Drive, 1313 Carson Drive, 1315 Carson Drive, 101 Crenshaw Courts, 103 Crenshaw Courts, 108 Gray Drive, 115 Ivy Lane, 246 Joyce Street, 255 Joyce Street, 1351 Kingston Oaks Drive, 347 Martin Luther King Drive, 261 Murphy Drive, 239 Murphy Drive, 1136 Parkview Drive, 1138 Parkview Drive, 1140 Parkview Drive, 123 Terry Lane, 134 Terry Lane, 1517 Trolley Road, 1541 Trolley Road, 1544 Trolley Road, 1602 Trolley Road, 1604 Trolley Road, and 438 West Fourth Street. Be it further resolved that the mayor shall have the overgrown grass and weeds on the property listed above cut or removed using city forces or the private contractors list in Attachment A. Any property owner shall have the right to have any weeds removed at his or her own expense provided the removal is done prior to the commencement of work by employees or agents of the City of Prattville. The mayor shall keep an accounting of all costs related to the removal of overgrown grass and weeds and report such costs to the City Council following their removal. Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Fink has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. Any further discussion on this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition? By a light sign, seeing none, the resolution is adopted. I have number two as an ordinance to rezone property located at 200, excuse me, 201 Gin Shop Hill Road from B2 to R4. I sponsored this ordinance, but I'm going to ask Counselor Fink to introduce it since this is in his district. Counselor Fink?
Thank you, with pleasure. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows: that the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville, Alabama, adopted on February 10, 1950, subsequently amended from time to time, and the zoning map adopted on the first day of May, 1987, is hereby amended to reclassify the property described in Attachment A and displayed in Attachment B from B2 General Business to R4 Multifamily, and that this proposed ordinance was advertised for two weeks in the Prattville Progress, a newspaper of general circulation within the city limits of the City of Prattville, and that the City Council of the City of Prattville shall, at its public hearing on the fifth day of June, 2012, at 6:00 PM, consider said proposed ordinance, and that at such time and place, all persons who desire shall have an opportunity to be heard in favor of or in opposition to such ordinance. All other items and provisions of the zoning ordinance of the City of Prattville, not herein specifically amended, shall remain in full force and effect. The amendments herein contained were considered and approved by the City of Prattville Planning Commission on April 19, 2012. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and execution as provided by law. Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Fink has moved this ordinance for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Bowes. By point of order, this is an ordinance, and it will carry over to our next regularly scheduled meeting unless there is a motion to suspend the rules.
So move.
Move by Counselor Wood, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Fink. Any discussion about the motion to suspend the rules? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? We're unanimous, the rules are suspended, and the ordinance is properly before us. Is there any further discussion on this proposed ordinance? Counselor Fink?
Yes, if I could take just a minute, obviously, I am in total support of this ordinance. I applaud the developers for seeing this, and I think there's a couple of people in the audience that deserve a lot of credit for this. They certainly, you guys would not be here if it wasn't for a few of these wonderful individuals that have been so supportive. I'm going to forego names because I'm looking at some of them, and they know who they are, but there's many people that were involved, but I applaud you for the work that you did, the commitment that you had, and I encourage each of my fellow counselors to support this as well.
Thank you, sir. Any further comments on this proposed ordinance? All those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? It's unanimous, the ordinance is approved. Next item is a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2012 budget to award bid number 012-005 in the amount of $29,520 to Peach State Ambulance for Type 1 ambulance remount. Counselor Miller, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas the City of Prattville Fire Department has a need for one Type 1 ambulance remount on a 2012 Dodge R3500 chassis, whereas six bids were left for the fire department for said remount, and whereas three bids were received, and Peach State Ambulance was the lowest responsible bidder with a total cost of $29,520. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the fiscal year 2012 budget insurance proceeds is hereby increased by $29,520, and the fiscal year 2012 budget line item fire department slash capital outlay is increased by $29,520. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby awards bid number 012-005 in the amount of $29,520 to Peach State Ambulance for Type 1 ambulance remount, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2012 budget line item fire department slash capital outlay. Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Miller has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Bowes. By point of order, since this is an amendment to our budget, this will have to carry over to our next regularly scheduled meeting unless there is a motion to suspend the rules. Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Move by Counselor Fink, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Bowes. Is there any discussion on the proposal to suspend the rules? All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? I see none. Rules are suspended, and the item is properly before us. This time, is there any further discussion on the proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? Seeing none, we are unanimous, resolution is approved. Counselor Miller?
Some of our guests may not know that it's not at all rude to leave after their agenda item has been dealt with instead of sitting through the rest of this agenda, so I just appreciate the point of privilege to remind them of that. It's okay to get up and leave if you want to.
Next item is a resolution to award bid number 012-006 to Ataga Automotive LLC, doing business as Gilmore Ford, for the purchase of three 2013 Explorer Interceptor Utility Police Pursuit SUVs at a cost of $73,503. Counselor Wood, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Whereas the City of Prattville Police Department has a need for three 2013 Explorer Intercepter Utility Police Pursuit SUVs, and whereas 17 bids were left for the police department for said SUVs, and whereas two bids were received, and Ataga Automotive LLC doing business as Gilmore Ford was the lowest responsible bidder with a cost of $24,501 for each vehicle. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville hereby awards bid number 012-006 in the amount of $73,503 to Ataga Automotive LLC doing business as Gilmore Ford for three 2013 Explorer Intercepter Utility Police Pursuit SUVs, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the FY 2012 budget line item police department cap outlay. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Counselor Wood has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Fink. Is there any discussion on this proposed resolution? Counselor Bowes?
Just for the record, will this be paid by cash? Thank you.
Any other counselors have any comments on this proposed resolution? This does not require suspension of the rules because it is a budgeted item, so all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? We are unanimous, the resolution is approved and adopted. Next item is a resolution to set a public hearing to declare various weeded lots to be a public nuisance and ordering their abatement per Title XI, Chapter 67 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended. Dr. Miller, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Whereas an abundance of overgrown grass or weeds is injurious to the public health, safety, and general welfare by providing a breeding ground and shelter for rats, mice, snakes, and mosquitoes and other vermin, may cause the further spread of weeds, may hide debris such as glass or metal that could inflict injury on a person going to such property, and may also pose a fire hazard and respiratory hazard. And whereas Section 11-67-1 of the Code of Alabama, 1975, as amended, permits the City Council of the City of Prattville to declare an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds to be a public nuisance. And whereas the Prattville Planning Department has inspected the properties at the following addresses and determined the existence of an abundance of overgrown grass and weeds: 204 Allenville Road, 493 Allenville Road, 106 End Iron Court, 108 End Iron Court, 334 Bent Tree Drive, 354 Bent Tree Drive, 103, 105, 106, 107, 108, 109, 110, 111, 112, 114, 116, Burning Embers Court, 207 Camelia Drive, 221 Camelia Drive, 105, 107, 109, 110, 112, 114, 116, 118 Chimney Ridge, 640 Cook Road, 1758 Edinburgh Street, 1157 Falk Avenue, 313 Festival Drive, 901, 904, 905, 906, 944, 946, I know why you gave me this one, all right, 946, 950, 952, 954, 956, 957, 958, 959, 960, 961, 962, 963, 964, 965, 966, 967, 968, 969, 970, 971, 973, 974, 975, 977, 978, 979, 981, 989, 992, 993, 995, 997, 999, Fireside Drive, 104, 106, 108, 110, 111, 112, 114, 118 Fireside Loop, 1578 Hawthorne Lane, 111 Isom Street, 113 Isom Street, 1209 Jamestown Drive, 542 Lower Kingston Road, 720 Lower Kingston Road, 108, 110, 111, 112, 113, 115, 117, 119 Mantlewood Court, 714 Mimosa Road, 1598 Rolling Hills Drive, 108 Seventh Street, 110 Seventh Street, 708 Silver Hills Drive, west of 946 Fireside and south of 116 and 118 Chimney Ridge, vacant lot east of 209 Fisk Street, vacant lot next to 430 East Sixth Street, vacant lot north of 156 Durden Road, vacant lot south of 1181 Upper Kingston Road, vacant lot next on White Oak Court, 1252 Wright Street, 1202 Yorkshire Avenue. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville declares the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds at the above listed addresses to be a public nuisance, and the owners of said property, as they appear in the records of the Taga County and/or Elmore County Revenue Commissioners, are ordered to abate the abundance of overgrown grass and weeds, and the owners of said property are ordered to appear before the City Council of the City of Prattville at a public hearing at 6:00 PM on July 3, 2012, in Prattville City Hall. Notice of such hearing and a copy of this resolution shall be sent by certified mail to owners of said property. Mr. President, I so move.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Counselor Miller has moved this resolution to set a public hearing for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Fink. Is any comments about this proposed resolution? All those in favor of adopting this resolution to set a public hearing signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. I have number six as a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2012 budget and to authorize the mayor to execute a cable television franchise management service agreement with Local Government Services LLC at a cost not to exceed $6,000. Counselor Striplin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville desires to regulate and oversee the provision of cable television services, and whereas the Local Government Services LLC has available a cable television franchise management service to assist the city in such regulation, and whereas the Cable Television Franchise Management Service is offered through a joint marketing and service agreement with LGS as an independent contractor of the Alabama League of Municipalities. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the FY 2012 budget surplus is hereby decreased by $6,000, and the FY 2012 budget line item finance department slash miscellaneous contract services is increased by $6,000. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that funds in an amount not to exceed $6,000 are hereby authorized and approved to be paid to Local Government Services LLC, and said funds are approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2012 budget line item finance department slash miscellaneous contract services. Be it further resolved that the City Council of the City of Prattville does hereby authorize, empower, and instruct the mayor of the City of Prattville to execute a cable television franchise management service agreement on behalf of the city in substantially the same form as Appendix A, which is attached to and made a part of this resolution. So move, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Striplin has moved this resolution for adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Miller. By point of order, this will carry over to our next regularly scheduled meeting unless there is a motion to suspend the rules.
So move.
Move by Counselor Fink, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Wood. Is there any discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Seeing none, all those in favor of suspension of the rules signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? Seeing none, the rules are suspended, resolution is properly before us. Any further discussion on this proposed resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a light sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Next item is an ordinance to surplus one, 1994 Ford F-800 from the Sanit- Next item is an ordinance to surplus one 1994 Ford F800 from the sanitation department. Counselor Wood, will you introduce this ordinance, please?
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows: That the vehicle listed below is hereby declared surplus of the sanitation department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department, 1994 Ford F800. Be it further ordained that the City Council instructs the mayor to sell said vehicle through govdeals.com and the proceeds be deposited in the Sanitation Enterprise Fund. Mr. Chair, I so move.
Counselor Wood has moved this ordinance for adoption, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Bowes. Since this is an ordinance, by point of order, this will carry over to our next regularly scheduled meeting unless there is a motion to suspend the ruse.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Wood, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Fink. Any discussion on the motion to suspend the ruse? All those in favor of suspending the ruse signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the ruse are suspended and the ordinance is properly before us. Is there any further discussion on this proposed ordinance? All those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the ordinance is adopted. Next item is item number eight, an ordinance to surplus one Kawasaki Mule from the wastewater department. Counselor Miller, will you introduce this ordinance, please?
Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Prattville, Alabama as follows: That the equipment listed below is hereby declared surplus of the wastewater department and is to be removed from the inventory of said department. Kawasaki Mule, State of Alabama, barcode number 0-11-04-977. Be it further ordained that City Council instructs the mayor to scrap said equipment, that proceeds be deposited into the wastewater enterprise fund. Mr. President, I so move.
Counselor Miller has moved this ordinance, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. By point of order, since this is an ordinance, this will carry over to our next regularly scheduled meeting unless there is a motion to suspend the ruse.
Motion.
Moved by Counselor Bowes, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Striplin. Is there any discussion on the proposal to suspend the ruse? All those in favor of suspending the ruse signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the ruse are suspended and the ordinance is properly before us. Any further discussion on this proposed ordinance? All those in favor of adopting this ordinance signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the ordinance is adopted. Last item on our agenda is a resolution to authorize the hiring of a temporary part-time building inspector for the fire department at a cost not to exceed $7,025. Counselor Striplin, will you introduce this resolution, please?
Yes, sir. Whereas the City of Prattville Fire Department has a need to hire a temporary part-time building inspector requiring specific certification, skills, and abilities, and whereas the City Council of the City of Prattville has implemented a hiring freeze, and whereas the cost of such employee for the remainder of the fiscal year 2012 budget year will not exceed $7,025 for salaries and benefits. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the fiscal year 2012 budget surplus is hereby decreased by $7,025 and the fiscal year 2012 budget line items fire department slash salaries and wages, workman's compensation, and FICA are increased by a total of $7,025. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that up to $7,025 is hereby authorized to be expended for the purpose of hiring a temporary part-time building inspector, and said funds are hereby approved and appropriated from the fiscal year 2012 budget line items fire department slash salaries and wages, workman's compensation, and FICA. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Prattville that the Human Resources Department is authorized to implement the hiring processes budgeted. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Striplin has moved this resolution for adoption, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Fink. According to our legal counsel, we will have to suspend the ruse if we're gonna act on this tonight, otherwise by point of order, it'll roll over to our next council meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Counselor Wood has moved for suspension of the ruse, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Miller. Any discussion on the proposal to suspend the ruse? All those in favor of suspending the ruse signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? The ruse are suspended, the item is properly before us. Any other comments or conversation pertaining to this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting this resolution signify by raising your right hand. Any opposition by a like sign? Seeing none, the resolution is adopted. Are there any items to come from the council from the floor on the agenda tonight? Nothing from the floor? Okay, we will open the meeting up to the public to come before the council and ask any questions pertaining to city business at this time. If you have any questions or comments pertaining to city business, now is the time. Yes, ma'am. Please come forward to the microphone and identify yourself, your name, and your address, please.
And I've got House of 641 Allenville Road. We have been working on it, I know it had gotten terribly behind. My husband died, and then there's just been a lot of things, and it had gotten in a mess. We have been working really hard on it, and I wanna know if we could have a couple or three more weeks to get it finished up. Most of the weeds and grass and everything's been cut, a lot of stuff gotten away, and we're getting it cleared up as fast as we can.
Mr. Duke?
Let me make sure we did it on the mic. Mr. President, we show that actually having been cut, so as far as the planning department's concerned, that violation has been cleared up.
Okay, resolved. Any other items of business to come before the council? Yes, sir. Way back in the back, come on, Val. I know who you are, but identify yourself by your name and address when you get to the microphone, please. I got a feeling we're dribbling again today, or this year, right?
Good evening. I'm Vince Jones, I live at 1134 Perry Del Loop here in Prattville, and each year, my wife and I, we sponsor SummerSlam events for the youth here in the city as well as abroad. This year, we're gonna kick off our annual events with the SummerSlam Wrestling Tournament at Prattville High School this weekend, and I'd like to invite all our council out. Last year, mayor came out and honored us with the opening prayer, and this year, hopefully, we can get some of our other councils to come out and see what the SummerSlam is all about, as well as the invitation to the public. So all the SummerSlam events are free, there's no cost, and it's something that, I know times are hard, but it's something that the city should take advantage of, and thank you for your time.
Have any questions, Vince? Counselor Fink?
Mr. Jones, are you gonna give us times and things like that if you could, if you can give it to us now, or you can give it to the clerk, to Ms. Dickerson, and she can get it in our boxes, but if you wanna give it to us now, that'd be great.
For the wrestling tournament, the weigh-ins will start at seven, competition will start at eight. I'll pass out flyers to all of you, I don't wanna hold everybody up, but weigh-ins will start at seven, competition will start at eight. This year, we dropped the ages back a little bit more, we're starting with eighth graders all the way up to eight, third graders all the way up to eighth graders, and then with the high school, taking their ACTs, we'll start their weigh-ins at one o'clock, and then we'll start competition with the high school at two o'clock.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate all you do for our young people. Anyone else like to address the council on any item of business? I see that County Commissioner Sid Thompson slipped in. Welcome, glad to have you with us, Sid.
Yeah, really interesting, this project.
Well, we have two gentlemen here that'd love to talk to you about it. Anybody else want to address the council on anything, any item of business that is? Mayor, do you have a closing comment or two?
Yes, sir.
Brief?
Very brief. Representative Beckman, I did get a message from him, he had left Birmingham, but he's not gonna be able to make it. He did try, and he will make it at our next council meeting if you'll entertain him with that. But I do like to say thank you to Mr. Burke and company for all the due diligence that you guys have done, the little bit of bright light that you have brought to this area. There's so many people who are very interested in this and the research that I have done. You guys, I believe, are the right people for this job and look forward to working with you in the very near future, and that's it. Thank you.
Counselor Striplin?
I do express appreciation for the potential for the development here and also for those in the community that have not given up hope and continue to push forward on the improvements of historic downtown Prattville. Thank you.
Counselor Wood?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gentlemen, welcome to Prattville, look forward to helping you all with this project and look forward to you all helping me with mine.
Counselor Miller?
I too, and I apologize for being late, but I do want to say welcome to Prattville. We've heard a lot about this project over the past several weeks, and it's one of the brightest stars to come on the horizon in my recent memory, and also, as far as I know so far, I'm the only one sitting up here who's not running for reelection, so I'll have some flexibility in terms of where I live in the city, and I'm just really excited about it, it's gonna be great.
Counselor Bowes?
Yes, thank y'all, guys, I got to know you because I was fortunate enough to be on the planning commission and be at the original meeting, and I am just excited as can be. I just, y'all hurry up, come on, bring the bulldozers in, let's get going, knock themselves all the buildings out, and can we have it up by August? Thank you.
Counselor Fink?
Yeah, not to get too repetitive, but I do as well, and, you know, when this project first came about, Ms. Boutwell contacted me and she said, you know, we cannot lose this structure, and I was not alive, I don't believe I was, when Daniel Pratt's house was taken down to build the corporate office there that's now, and candidly, I think that was a true travesty for the history of the City of Prattville, and I kind of felt that it was our moral obligation to make sure that we found a way to save this, that I did not want to lose that building, quote unquote, on my watch, so to speak. That would not be a comfortable feeling to live with, so I applaud you for not allowing us to lose that on the watch that we've been entrusted to have down here, so I look forward to working with you in any way we can, certainly, and I look forward to seeing the progress because it is a true jewel for downtown, it really is, and I concur, I think you will add a lot to the retail corridor down here as well with the residential, so I'm looking forward to working with you guys. Thank you, welcome.
Again, thank you very much for your vote today. I'd like to thank you all again for your considerable efforts to help us get this done, and we sure do appreciate it. But I wanted to mention earlier, none of this would have been possible without Joel Duke's hard work and efforts, he's been very, very helpful in this process, so, Joel, thank you very much.
We're still not gonna give him a raise. I don't really have a whole lot to add to what my fellow counselors have already said, except welcome, thank you for coming, thank you for the investment that you're making in our community, and I know in my 16 years of dealing with economic development that scouts that we don't even know come into town, come to downtown first to see what we're doing with what we have and how we're taking care of downtown, and you will help us show well, and thank you. That being said, our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 19, 2012, at 6:00 PM. Counselor Fink, would you like a point of privilege? Go right ahead.
Yes, just a point of privilege here, I know there's a few of us up here that are fathers, and there's several in the audience, but I would like to wish everybody a happy Father's Day, I believe it's coming up rather quickly, so I hope each of you have a blessed Father's Day.
Glad you mentioned that, this'll be the first Father's Day that I'll celebrate without my father, he passed last August, and we'll miss him, but a happy Father's Day to all. That being said, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I hear a motion? Moved by Counselor Fink, is there a second? Second by Counselor Striplin, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, we adjourn.